Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. My name is Councilmember Barb Warwick and I chair the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. For this hearing, we will be hearing from the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. And I'd like to, well, everybody's here at the table already. And so Budget Director Peter McDevitt, if you'd like to give us a brief overview.
Thank you, Councilmember. The mission of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is to provide the physical mobility necessary to enable the social and economic mobility of the people of Pittsburgh through the management, design, improvement, and operation of the public rights of way. The Department of Mobility and Infrastructure is comprised of three bureaus, that is Planning, Policy, and Permitting, Traffic Operations, and Project Design and Delivery. In the 2026 proposed budget, there is a total of 124 full-time positions out of the general fund, that is an increase of two from last year. And in a quick summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there is a about $721,000 increase in non-personnel budgets. DOMI also has the largest share of the capital budget, as they do every year, so there is a long list of capital budgets for you there. And they also have a good chunk of the fee schedule that is outlined there for you as well. That's all I have.
Great. Well, with that, Director, I don't know if you want to go through and introduce everyone first and then, yeah, and then take it away?
Sure. I'm acting Director. My name is Jeff Skellican. I'm acting Director for DOMI.
Angie Martinez, Assistant Director, Planning, Policy, and Permits.
Eric Sessler, Chief Engineer for the Project Design and Delivery Bureau.
Zach Workman. I'm the Deputy Chief Engineer in the same bureau.
Mike Mallock, Municipal Traffic Engineer.
And Evan Gross, Fiscal Supervisor.
Okay, we have a PowerPoint presentation for you guys. So we're going to go through the budget meeting as a 2025 look back and also a 2026 look ahead. So DOMI, who are we? We are the Department of Transportation for the city of Pittsburgh. Our core functions are asset management, right-of-way management planning, and project delivery. We're going to get to all three of these functions in our slideshow, okay? Our organization chart, it is, sorry, I'm a little glitz here. The Director's Office is, we have four bureaus. We have Administrative, Planning, Policy, and Permitting, Project Design and Delivery, Traffic Operations, and we have a total of 127 full-time positions. For 2025 accomplishments, this is for department-wise, we had a dedicated communications staff. The staff was very vital for delivering our projects. They were able to go out to community meetings, be able to have community participation, and also work with council on our projects. It really gets our staff out of those community meetings and actually engineering and planning our projects. Penn.SPC coordination, this is very vital. Since DOMI's been a department, we started with about four or five projects that are federally and state-funded. We're currently around 44 projects that are receiving federal and state funds. And majority of this is because we have great Penn.SPC coordination. Public safety coordination, the department here has been working with public safety. We have a monthly meeting that we actually meet with the staff and we go over our projects. We show them the design, show them the impacts of the community, and we take their feedback seriously and we have to, we hear each other out. Vision Zero, Vision Zero really has become really robust in 2025. We have a couple different types of committees that are now attached to it, and it's really going well and we're looking to see it through. I'm going to hand it off to Angie Martinez.
Yep. Thank you, Council, for having us. I always look forward, actually, to this budget presentation because it's a great opportunity for us to look back at our accomplishments. I think that's especially important for the bureau I lead of Planning, Policy, and Permits, because so much of what we do is kind of behind the scenes, especially when I compare it to, you know, what my colleagues are doing, literally building bridges and or traffic signals. But it's through planning, through policy, standard procedures, guidelines, all things that you'll hear me talking about that our group oversees, that we really get the opportunity to be able to scale up and deliver all aspects of DOMI's mission. Because when we deliver predictable and consistent work, I believe we're providing the very best value to our residents and delivering our work in the best manner possible. Before I jump into slides, the executive team, we were talking about prepping for this presentation, one of the things we wanted to do was really put a spotlight on our staff. It's because of the 120-some people that work for the department that we're able to achieve the work that we do. So we'll be talking not only about the work that we've done, but also about the staff that have enabled us to be able to do it. So, starting first with our Planning Bureau, this is an office of one supervisor and then three staff planners. The thing that I want to highlight on this first slide is our in-house capability within our planning unit. So we have a team that is expert and qualified in being able to look at crash data, analyze it, review crash reports, do GIS analysis, and also do design, conceptual design drawings for projects. So because we have all of this great in-house capability, we're able to actually act as good planners to our colleagues in Traffic and Streets Division to help them better deliver the projects that they oversee. So on this slide, you see some examples of the planning process that we ran for both South 18th Street and 21st Street. Those are projects that are going to be delivered by other DOMI bureaus, as well as some of the scoping that we did for both traffic calming installation projects and for the Lawrenceville Mobility Enhancement District. Next slide. This slide continues in some of the work that we started this year and that is going to continue into next year. Just very quickly, I want to highlight two projects of this list. The first is our South Neville and Boundary Streets, Streetscape Plan, excuse me. This is an example of a transportation planning process, I think, in its sort of truest form. So this is a vital roadway mobility link in Oakland, and it's a road that isn't working well for anybody today. And unlike many streets in the city where we're working within a very constrained, tight geography or cartway, we actually have space along Boundary Neville to really reimagine that road and how it can work for all users, for cars, for pedestrians. This road currently lacks sidewalks, so people are walking in the street, and even for cyclists because this road is also an extension of our trail network. So this planning process is very robust, and we're approaching it in anticipation of being able to seek grants to actually move into construction. So the reason why I wanted to highlight it is because our approach to planning within DOMI is to really be focused on making sure that anything that we do in planning is in service of ultimately getting to a project that can be implemented. The other project that I wanted to highlight on here is actually a project done by others. So some of the work that we do is also just being a liaison or a point person for the city on behalf of other people's projects. Allegheny County is in the process of doing a Vision Zero Action Plan, and as a part of that effort, PennDOT is at the table, SPC is at the table, of course, the county is at the table. And in this process, they've identified 10 corridors within the county that are going to advance into conceptual design. Six of these are within the city, and three of them are in PennDOT roads. This is really notable because for so long, we have talked about the limitations that the city has when it comes to seeking roadway safety treatments on state routes. So this is an example of a project that somebody else is leading, but is really starting to break down those existing silos to get us to a place where I think we all want to be, which is the city being able to have a greater say on how state routes, state routes within our city function. Our planning group also facilitates our Complete Streets Advisory Group, which is our citizens' sort of sounding board and body for DOMI decisions. One of our 2025 goals for CSAG was to focus on membership. This is just the second year of CSAG since it's come back off hiatus, and we really want that group to be reflective of the city's population as a whole. So to that end, this year, we onboarded six new members onto CSAG, and then we also worked with the committee to help organize a mini-election for them to actually nominate or select somebody who would act as a representative and able to speak on their behalf. So this has been great because it's able to keep the CSAG committee separate from DOMI and sort of put somebody in the place of having the voice to be able to speak on behalf of the committee as a whole. Moving on to some of our policy and program work, we have a Transportation Demand Coordinator and a Policy Analyst. Our transportation, excuse me, Transportation Demand Management refers to the policies and strategies to enable or reducing vehicle congestion by promoting other modes. This position is actually grant-funded through a CMAC Fund, that's Congestion Mitigation Reduction Program. And so this person has been working throughout the years to promote detours and closures, getting those closures in navigation apps. They were liaison to DCP as they were working through potential changes to city code involving parking maximums and transportation demand management. This position is important also looking into 2026. One of the things that we want to get better at is promoting and communicating proactively on where we have major roadway closures and disruption to the transportation system. And when appropriate, when those closures or impacts are significant enough, we also want to pair them with opportunities for trip planning. So you'll see this in 2026 when the city hosts the NFL Draft, when PennDOT closes the Commercial Street Bridge for their construction project. We're going to be promoting not only the road closures, but also better ways to get around. Where's there a good place to park so maybe you're not running into congestion? Should you be, should we be encouraging people to maybe take the bus or bike, grab a pogo? This is how we can think about reducing congestion by advertising and promoting other modes. Our Safe Routes to School program continues to grow. This year, we saw an increase in both the number of students walking and biking during our fall and spring Bike and Roll to School Day. The other thing that we did this year was develop a new site visit request form for school administrators. So our Safe Routes to School Coordinator, Harriet Jackson, does a fantastic job, but one of the things she was struggling with were the school administrators, crossing guards, others reaching out to her with a slew of problems, whether it was sign changes, loading issues, bike parking for students. So we worked with our colleagues in the traffic group to create a site visit form so that we could consolidate all of these requests into one place to hopefully expedite actual reviews and changes of the streets to make them safer for kids walking and rolling to school. So we used that form six times this year. It's already resulted in street signage changes around two of our schools, and we look forward to continue to build this out and expand it. In 2026, we are also looking forward to, for the first time, going into the high schools for our Safe Routes to School education. So more exciting things to be done there. Moving next to our curbside and new mobility team, 2025 was the first full year that we had staffing of this group. It's comprised of one supervisor position and then two positions underneath, a program analyst and a policy analyst. The group sets policies and reviews for everything from loading zones, residential permit parking areas. They also oversee the city's bus shelter maintenance contract, work very closely with Parking Authority and our traffic sign shop to coordinate and implement these changes. In 2025, some of the highlights of the program, we put forth two changes to RPPs, we stood up a Mobility Enhancement District in Lawrenceville, we conducted over 22 parking studies in-house. I want to stop there for a moment because when we did the Lawrenceville Mobility Enhancement District, we actually had to contract the parking studies for that out. Now, that was a very large, complex study area. It's probably closer to the three studies than one study, but the cost to contract that out was $55,000. And so by having the staff in this group that have the time and the ability to actually go out there and do the traffic studies is just so important. It means that the decisions that we're making about our curbside regulations are based in data, and thankfully, we don't have to rely on trying to find outside funds to make that happen. The last thing I'll note on the successes of the team for this year has to do with installing new bus shelters. I'll touch a little bit more on that in a later slide through our Transit Improvement Program from 2025. Assistant Director Jeff, already talked a little bit about our Vision Zero Working Groups. So as folks know, the city committed formally to Vision Zero last year. We've seen a lot of progress in the 14 months or so that we've been up and running. One thing to know is that all of the work that's been accomplished has been under existing staff capacities. So that means a lot of people who have some role in getting to zero roadway fatalities or serious injuries have been pulled into our five working groups in order to break down these sort of inter-agency silos that, you know, prohibit or prevent us from making progress in this area. So we're really excited to see that in 2026, there's a plan for a coordinator position. It is absolutely a full-time job to make sure all of these things come together. So on this slide, you know, I would say successes for Vision Zero. We have made great strides towards improving our relationship with public safety. We got the Automated Red Light Enforcement, RFP, out the door. This slide shows some of the education materials that we've been developing. So far this year, we have had 19 fatalities on our non-interstate streets within the city. Four of those involved pedestrians, three of those involved motorcycles. So on this slide, you can see the education material that our Education Engagement and Communications Subcommittee put together, specifically speaking to motorcyclists as a sort of group. And then we attended a motorcycle show to distribute that materials to that specific audience. So again, this is a good example of how we're applying the data and what we're learning about, you know, the types of fatal crashes that we're having, and then attempting to tailor our marketing and outreach to meet those, to meet those needs. Moving on to our Permit and Review Staff, in terms of permitting process, or excuse me, permit processing, we have four staff and one supervisor. For traffic reviews, this is the people who review any road closures as well as issue no parking signs. We have two staff and one supervisor. When it comes to development review, so looking at changes from private development and impacts on the right-of-way, a site plan is on this slide to give you a sense of, you know, what our development review planners are looking at. We have one project manager and a senior planner supporting the work. When we look at volume, we've issued 7,800 DOMI permits as of October. That's on track for where we've been in the past. And we've completed 761 transportation reviews on building and zoning permits. So that 761 number is directly attributed to those two development review staff members I've talked about. We continue to be sort of resource-constrained in this group. In 2025, we had, you know, just normal things, people going on leave, people taking vacation, but we just have no slack in this group. And so when those things happen, we fall behind. Typically, a permit turnaround is three to four days. This summer, we were at three to four weeks because of, you know, our sort of resource scarcity when it comes to the staff available for these volumes for processing. That said, we do continue to try to develop policies and procedures that make it so that we can better deliver service to our customers. Two examples of that on this slide, we developed a utility capital project permitting process. This will allow DOMI to see plans from utilities earlier on in the process and hopefully help streamline permits as they actually get applied for down the line. We also developed a new asphalt art policy to help guide community groups and others that might have an interest in pursuing street art. So I think this is a great example of how our work is both practical and necessary in the utility space, but how we're also trying to, you know, meet the needs, other needs of streets. So making sure that they can be beautiful, there's placemaking elements, et cetera. On the inspection side of the house, we did see some changes to this team as a result of some of the operating budget items from last year. We have two staff that specialize in code enforcement, basically 3-1-1 response, and then also looking for proactive violations in the right-of-way, and a supervisor to make sure those get resolved. And then our right-of-way construction supervisor, or excuse me, our right-of-way inspection inspectors, we have eight of those, and a supervisor. This team collectively has performed close to 25,000 inspections for permits and over 5,300 code violations that have been cited in the right-of-way. The last three slides I have are not specific to any one person or group within the department, but I think really just illustrate some of the progress that DOMI has made over the past couple of years. So on this slide, I wanted to highlight work we did for our Transit Stop Improvement Program. So this was new for 2025. We focused on high ridership transit stops that did not have a bus shelter because the condition of the sidewalk was either not appropriate to install a shelter, or it wasn't wide enough for us to be able to install a shelter and still provide ADA clearance. So knowing that this is a limitation to us being able to get shelters installed, the Complete Streets Advisory Group advocated for this pot of funds. Pittsburghers for Public Transit was very happy to help support us in going out there and doing site visits. We worked with our colleagues in DPW to actually improve the sidewalk so that we can get a bus shelter out there, and our colleagues in the, or excuse me, in the Streets Division to make sure that we have the necessary designs and engineering in place. So people talk about government, you know, working slowly. I feel that way too at times, but I think this is an example of, in less than a year, we developed an entire program and actually got transit facilities out into the public space. And so if you look at this location, Brighton Road at Woods Run, and go back in Google Street View, you'd see that prior to this bus shelter being installed, people were literally sitting on milk crates. So I think this is an excellent example of what we can do when we kind of line things up and time them out. And more to come on this program in the future. It wasn't funded in 2026, but I think now that we've operationalized it, we're going to be able to look for more creative funding solutions to be able to continue it. The paving work actually runs out of project design and delivery, but because it represents such a huge portion of DOMI's budget, planning is involved to make sure that we're constantly improving the way that we're preparing that paving list, that we're avoiding utility conflicts where we can, and that we're looking for potential opportunities to coordinate our work with paving and even with those utility jobs. So on the left side of the screen, you'll see some of the stats from our paving program this year. We hit 44 miles. We focused on primary streets and picking up streets that are going to be high-impact when we host the NFL Draft. To the right are some of the changes that we made more on the procedural side of things. So as of this year, there's an engage page for our paving program. So residents, members of council, you can actually subscribe to this page and you'll get an email notification. Usually, it's up Thursday or Friday before the next week's paving list actually starts. We also spent quite a bit of time making sure that we were cleaning up all of our street records. This was a monumental sort of administrative task, but now that it's complete, it really positions the city to be able to use GIS and other mapping tools to get ahead of any potential conflicts. And so making sure that we use the same street ID as the utilities do when they submit projects to us helps us just very quickly be able to know where we might be running into issues. And then finally, I think the success of this work, really the gold standard that we hit this year that makes, you know, me really proud of all of the time we put into it, is that we were successfully able to leverage the work of utilities to install traffic calming projects. So the two examples on here that we did was Bayard and North Neville and Beacon Street and White Men. Utilities already had these streets opened up. They had to pave them and put down some markings. Because we had our designs ready to go, we said, instead of putting down, replacing in kind, replace the traffic into the new standard. And we can do that, and it doesn't cost the paving, or excuse me, it doesn't cost the utilities any more money if we get ahead of it and plan for it. So we had two of these this year. I suspect that as we continue to grow and get better, this will be something that we'll see more and more of. And the last item I wanted to highlight was trail development. This is work that spans not only DOMI, DPW, a lot of external partners that are interested in our trails for recreation, for mobility, for even for economic development. To the left, you see the portion of the South Side Trail between Hot Meadow and Baldwin Borough. This is probably our most cited 3-1-1 section of trail because it's been really bumpy because of tree roots. So this year, with a grant from DCNR, we were able to pave that trail. We cut down all the invasive species so that you can actually see the river from the trail, and we also resolved a drainage issue that was there. To the right, and on the other side of the spectrum, we also had to close a portion of our trail along the Ohio River in the Chateau neighborhood because of a structural issue and the trail and the land starting to, you know, destabilize there. But what I want to call out with these two examples is really the partnership and the bridges that we've been building between Friends of the Riverfront, Riverlife, and DPW, and managing this really important asset. So thankfully, Friends of the Riverfront was able to help us communicate all of these closures. I think being able to close a trail and not catch people by surprise is important. And then in the case of the South Side Trail, where there was simply no opportunity for any sort of detour, Friends actually at their own expense and with assistance from the Gap Trail Network was able to pay for a shuttle to actually bus cyclists and trail users so they wouldn't be stranded when we closed the trail. So this is only possible when we make the time and we have the relationships to, you know, coordinate on these efforts.
I'm going to go in and start talking about the Project Design and Delivery Bureau. Our bureau has five divisions. I'll talk about the first couple, then I'll turn it over to Zach to go from there. Going to highlight some of the stuff we've done this year, and I think you'll see a bit of a theme with what Angie started with, talking about staff capacity and some of the things we've been able to do in-house. I'll continue that theme and it'll continue on down the line because it's a really big deal that we think that we are accomplishing a lot. So first, talking about our Streets Division. This is one of our engineering divisions. We manage a lot of our bigger street projects. We have street reconstructions, full reconstructions. There's four of them going on right now, two of them, Penn Avenue and Smithfield, will be moving into construction next year, finally. Bus Rapid Transit is ongoing, of course, and we already talked earlier, we mentioned the Boundary Street project. Streetscape projects, which maybe aren't full reconstructions, but still have a very big impact on the street, we have four of those going on right now in design, including South 21st, which I'll talk about on the next slide, and then trails, we're doing trail work. Trolley Trail is at its very final stages of design and will be out to bid very shortly. Sylvan and Allegheny River Green Boulevard are just getting started on that one. So South 21st Street is one of our Streetscape projects. Folks know South 21st. It's a very, very wide street with a lot of parking in the median currently. There has been a project that was originally developed and championed by the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy to redo the street, and it languished for a number of years due to a lack of funding. This past year, we had to kind of make a decision point and we moved it, re-scoped it, moved it in-house, and are doing just a straight Streetscape project at this point. Our planning group has been involved in doing the planning for it. Our Streets Division is actually designing, engineering and designing the project in-house, and we are estimating that we'll save over $400,000 in consultant design costs and over six months of design time by doing that work in-house. So we're really excited about that. That's the That's the biggest project that we've bid off to date. So far, it's going quite well, and we are hoping to get it out to bid in the first half of next year. Another big area that our Streets Division gets involved in is our Critical Sidewalk Gap Program. This has been active for several years now, replacing sidewalks both that are in poor condition or also closing gaps where perhaps a sidewalk never existed before. This year, we've delivered nine district sidewalk gap projects. Wanted to do another case study. We received a PennDOT grant to do critical sidewalk gaps at three locations, which was wonderful, and it helped us do that work. The design cost was kind of steep. It was $192,000 to build, to design those three locations to meet the PennDOT standards and everything. The other six locations, we designed in-house for no design cost. So that shows once again the power of our in-house staff to get some of these projects through the process. Just a little graphical view of our sidewalk projects. In addition to the nine critical sidewalk gap projects, the 10th one, Sylvan Avenue Neighborhood, is also listed because while it wasn't strictly a sidewalk project, it resulted in a lot of new sidewalks. And all this work was done by our Streets Division, which has four staff, two project managers, one of which Steve is funded by the BRT project and only focuses on BRT and RACE, and then the rest of our work being done by a project manager, project engineer, and staff engineer. I wanted to touch on our Construction Division. A little different than the DPW Construction Division in that they don't have tradespeople, but they do manage a good bit of work for us, both some larger capital construction projects, there's a listing of them up there. A lot of these are retaining walls, landslides, some of our wall and step projects as well. They also manage our concrete brick and block stone street repair program. We hit 17 different streets this year, and they are able to do step repair and reconstruction off of our on-call contractors. So those are projects that don't require a design process, and they can, they handle all of our contract guide rail and fence installation and repair. And we've got three folks in our Construction Division, a supervisor, a project manager, and an inspector. I wanted to touch on our Paving Division as well. Of course, Angie talked about it already to some degree, and a lot of the improvements and the coordination that we've done this year, but I did want to give our staff their due there. It's a small division considering the amount of capital funds that they push through. There's seven staff, a supervisor, foreman, three inspectors, a fiscal coordinator, and the seventh is actually a laborer that we've been, had, his position has remained in DPW, but he's been working with us since even before our department was created. That is something that we need to, he retired this year, so we need to make sure that we can continue with that position in future years to keep going and making sure we're inspecting our work. As I said, it's the largest city funded capital program. We did about $17 million of work in 2025. In addition to the paving, they also handle all the ADA ramps associated with the paving program and are able to pick up different kinds of drainage improvements along the way that have kind of a paving component to them. So that's the paving division, then I will pass it off to Zach.
Thank you, Eric. So I'm gonna go over our Structures Division, but for the, I wanted to start off by looking more closely at our Bridge Maintenance Division, kind of the last, the last operations division within PDD. So this year, proud to say that we finally have a fully-staffed Bridge Maintenance Division. The division started off the year with just our supervisor. We were filling the foreman position in January and the other positions throughout the year. It's been a really long process, it's been a lot of work, but it's great to finally have that team of five, the fully-staffed team. As we've had more people come online, the capabilities of the division have greatly increased. You know, initially, they were basically able to wash pedestrian bridges, wash our bridges with really low traffic volumes, but they're now to the point where they're able to take on some of the much larger structures and are doing some critical repairs as well. So yeah, with that, I want to look a little bit more closely at our, kind of a case study for one of the bridges that was washed recently. This is the California Avenue Bridge, washed in August 2025. So it's not very exciting, but washing bridges is extremely necessary, and it's already been some of the kind of bread and butter of the maintenance division. So we've got some before and after pictures of the condition of both the gutters, the scuppers, and really, you know, we need to keep these things in good condition, otherwise it leads to extremely expensive deterioration down the line. So our crew, they've been logging their daily work in Cartograph, and they're able to put their equipment and their time, and Cartograph is estimating that washing this bridge, that cost about $2,300. Just for comparison, if we were to have gone to our competitively bid on-call contractor, the work order for this structure would have been about $35,000. So getting this work done 15 times cheaper is really, really great representation of the value of the Bridge Maintenance Division. So looking more closely at the Structures Division, the engineering work coming out of the Structures Division in Domi, I wanted to start off looking at our larger bridge capital projects. So these are all bridges that are on the Transportation Improvement Program or the tip. We've got 19 bridges in the works, two of them in construction, with another 17 in the design stages. 15 of these bridges are in poor condition, so again, this is addressing critical issues in the transportation network in Pittsburgh. Really important to highlight that these projects are all either 95 or 100% reimbursed by FHWA and PennDOT. So they're really time-intensive, but there's a lot of value in putting the resources into delivering these projects. We do rely on several consultants to manage the projects, and that does, their cost is also reimbursed through the project. But I just want to highlight that, you know, relying on project managers, outside project managers for that work introduces some pretty large inefficiencies into the schedule, just as the nature of the agreement process that we're contingent to. So turning our attention to our projects without PennDOT oversight, we've got a whole host of things going on. Obviously, we're really excited to show off the newly-completed Davis Avenue Bridge, but also we've got, we had a major remediation and mitigation landslide project in Mount Washington. That was a $13 million project that was fully reimbursed by FEMA to bring resiliency to the street grid in Mount Washington. We're finalizing the construction contract for repairs to the Panther Hollow Bridge with the goal of reopening it in 2026. We're advancing seven landslide projects through the engineering phase. And one project that's, we're excited about, our Calera Street Bridge Number Two. We're actually designing this project in-house using Domi's engineers, and it's been off to a pretty smooth start. Really proud of the work they've done so far. To compare, we have a Calera Street Bridge Number One, which is on the tip, and the first phase in engineering for an outside consultant is $431,000. So that's the scale of savings when we can do this work in-house. So I want to take a closer look at a few specific bridges, put into context the work that is necessary and the work that we're doing, starting off with our Charles Anderson Bridge. And I just want to give a quick refresher on the project timeline. So this started engineering in 2019, and then it was closed in February of 2023. Engineering completed later in 2023. We issued notice to proceed to a contractor in April 2024. They were able to complete some of the early repair work by the end of '24, which allowed them to then mobilize for full-scale rehabilitation. There have been some challenges and surprises, but construction is proceeding and the teams have been working really well together. But the enormity of the project, the thousands of hours that go into the engineering, the thousands of hours into the construction, into the oversight, documenting the project from start to finish is, it's just substantial. So just wanted to highlight that while this is one of our largest and most complicated structures, it does, I think it puts into perspective the dozens of projects we're advancing now through the engineering phase and the work that lies ahead. So a little bit different in scope, but again, I think these are really important things that we are tackling this year. The Milroy Street Bridge over I-279, this connects East Street to a small neighborhood near Observatory Hill. The bridge is only 40 years old. I think the average age for our bridges is probably in the 80s. We designed bridges to get 75 to 100 years out of them, so 40 years is objectively a young bridge. This also provides the only access for larger vehicles into this small neighborhood, so it's essentially, it's an essential route for the people that live there. The bridge has been in poor condition for 14 years, and ultimately, that's due to a lack of maintenance. In 2023, we conducted a sort of a blitz addressing leaking expansion joints on critical bridges across the city. That work order for this bridge cost $19,000. Just a couple months ago, we were able to finally address the critical deterioration that was playing out over several decades of neglect below those joints to the tune of $286,000. So here's an example of, you know, keeping up with the routine maintenance tasks, making sure that things aren't leaking, that the drainage system works properly, saves hundreds of thousands of dollars and ensures, you know, access to neighborhoods that might potentially be cut off. So I'm really excited, though, that this bridge is finally being lifted out of poor condition. The city still has 39 bridges in poor condition, and everything we can do to cut that down is, I think, exciting, so. And then on a similar note, the Heron Avenue Bridge, which was closed for four months earlier this year, this also is a bridge that's not very old. It was built in 1980. It has modern construction techniques. It's especially challenging to work on because it crosses over three separate railroads and PRT, so access is a nightmare to coordinate. But nonetheless, it has the same routine maintenance needs that were going undone for decades. So this was one that we also addressed in our 2023 blitz on expansion joints. It's a little bit bigger bridge, so we had to spend a bit more on it, but that routine work of $76,000 to keep things working as they're intended. The project, this bridge does have a comprehensive rehabilitation project in the works. Engineering started in 20, early, or in 2024, and, you know, we're looking forward to being able to make a major investment with the support from FHWA and PennDOT. In order to get the bridge reopened, we had to do a very, well, it was a temporary solution. That's basically a sunk cost, and that's money that won't be recouped and isn't an investment into the long-term health of the structure. So again, another example of just keeping up with the maintenance to save dollars down the line. Lastly, I just wanted to highlight the awesome work that our junior engineers are doing in-house, modernizing our asset management program, following on, you know, completely redeveloping our, how we monitor our bridge, our bridge structures. We've also applied that now, carrying the momentum forward to overhaul our retaining walls and steps. So this year, our two staff engineers and some interns have digitized thousands of records and have completed over 500 inspections on city retaining walls. That's out of about 900. That in itself is practically a full-time job, but it's, what they've completed is really impressive. The median age of our retaining walls is 83 years old. Again, that's getting up there in age. So we've been, we've programmed several projects a year, but when you have 900 retaining walls in your inventory at an average age of 83, you know, there's going to be a lot of work to be done in the next few decades. Similarly, we've been modernizing our steps, asset management, developing inspection procedures so we can get caught up on those in-house and also developing better resources for monitoring our landslides. So with that, I just want to emphasize that the Structures Division, we've got seven engineers, including myself, and I would describe that as a lean team for the amount of work that we're doing. With that, I'll hand it off to Mike for traffic.
Thank you, Zach. So before I go into my section, this presentation, I have a few housekeeping notes. First, I want to acknowledge you all have a hard job. I appreciate that in terms of, you know, a common theme amongst us is that we are excited about the in-house work we're doing. We're gonna talk about how resource constrained we are. I'm gonna continue that. I'm doing so with the knowledge that we have a tight budget. And so if I'm dreaming about things, more things that we can do with in-house money, that is primarily just because I'm looking forward to a future where we can do this more. It's no, I'm not being flippant about the current budget situation. And also in listening to what my colleagues have said, I also, my other two notes are that I'm just really proud of our work, both the breadth and quantity of our work. And it's not just my team, like now there's a traffic operations team, it's everyone. And everyone, like, I'm just talking, I'm just saying words. Like, everything that I'm doing here, there's a collection of civil servants behind it who are what make this happen. And so I just want to, like, we are very, I'm very lucky. We are all very lucky to have them serving the city. I'm terribly proud, and I hope you all feel the same way, too. So with respect to my team, I have three divisions. I've designed a division first, and within them, I have three separate groups. The first one is streetlight. LED conversion started this year. That was our big accomplishment. It's a huge accomplishment. It's been around for, I don't know how many years, eight years? And so this is a Moby Dick of a project for us. It is happening, and as of a couple days ago, I believe 40% of our LED luminaires have been replaced. All 47 of our gateways are installed for future connectivity for smart streetlights. Obviously, we have contractors, we have consultants, but all of this passes through Domi's staff. And in this case, there's one staff person for the entire city who does streetlights. That's Denny Robinson. He'd better be paying attention to this presentation today. My second design group, which the branding is rough, I still need to work this, but I'm calling them Vision Zero Implementation. And within them, they do three types of projects. The first type of project is neighborhood traffic calming. That project is entirely meant to slow down vehicle speeds on neighborhood streets. We did 13 projects in 2025. I'm not naming them. And just because I know someone's gonna ask me this at some point today, current status of our neighborhood traffic calming portal. The big one there is 265 locations that meet our criteria for traffic calming and another 213 that need to be evaluated. These projects are designed by in-house staff. The evaluation process is a combination of consultants as well as in-house staff. So we also do what I'm calling Vulnerable Road User Safety Projects, VRU for short. These projects are entirely focused on making our streets safer for our most vulnerable users, that being the pedestrian and the cyclists. In most cases, these are gonna be intersections- In most cases, these are going to be intersection or cycling facility projects. Again, we did 14 projects this year. These are high-impact projects, typically using quick build materials, paint, flex posts, signage, sometimes precast concrete curbs. We are doing all these projects that I just mentioned in our neighborhood traffic calming budget, which in past year, I believe, was about $1.3 million. And then projects where we take a holistic look at the corridor and not immediately identify spot treatments for spot problems, spot problems, I'm calling corridor safety projects. These take more effort. These are going to have some form of public engagement. In many cases, Angie's team is going to help us by doing planning upfront, and these are ones where we combine our full suite of treatments and look at the corridor and identify problems, a combination of slowing down vehicle speeds, multimodal designs, as well as intersection of safety treatments. These, these are valuable projects. They're harder for us to do just because of the quant, like, the amount of work involved, and we did three this past year. So the Vision Zero Implementation Group did a total of 30 projects in 2025. Five people. Start to finish, design, invoicing, five people. And so my third design group is the Traffic Signal Design Group from the Capital Signal Program. We have currently, we did four traffic signal construction projects in the city, and then three were designed that will be constructed next year. The fun notes here are that 80 or 100% of these are funded by PennDOT, and that of that list on your screen right now, I believe, four out of the seven were designed by in-house And that same bureau also manages our large corridor federally funded projects. And so of that collection on the screen right now, I'm, I'm putting BRT Downtown Loop into this group because even though we do not hold that contract, like, my team is along for every step of the way because we own the infrastructure at the end of the day. So every traffic signal problem, we're out there responding. Every design question, construction issue, someone from my team is out there. That was a major accomplishment for us. We also began North Avenue, and then the BRT Oakland Uptown Project began this year as well. And then there are five large federally funded projects that are in various stages of design. And we also do smart signals. That is, this is hard. This part of the job is really, really tough, and it's been a long road for me and for my team, and we are so close to beginning construction of a city traffic management center, a facility that houses streaming footage as well as the ability to communicate to traffic signals in the field from one location. Currently, we're dumb. We go out and we look at them from the street corner, and it's not by choice, it's, well, it is, it's not by choice, it's because we have no, we have no choice. That's how we operate. This is a major step for us. It's going to change how we respond to traffic needs in the city. So what I just laid out to you from the traffic signal side is $60 million, six people. And then there are also two maintenance divisions that are within the Traffic Bureau. One does signs and markings. Our supervisor, Ron Romano, kindly put together this really large spreadsheet he's been keeping all year of all the stuff he's painted, all the signs he's done. It's a lot. They're the best. I love them. They're great. And something that I'm most proud and excited about what they accomplished this year is that we have a thermoplastic truck, and they're out there putting thermoplastic crosswalks on a street. That is a city crew at Fort Ethan Butler. I went out there and watched them. You don't notice how nice these look compared to Waterborne. The amount of money we're saving, I roughly estimate, per contractor, 5,000 intersection the materials is 750 for the city. And like, every single one of you, I'm sure, have asked me at some point for crosswalks, and this is like, they look good, they feel good. We can do it now. Like, this is, they have gotten so good at this, and so if there are a world in which we could have a truck and three people, we would be blasting these into the city nonstop. I know that's not something that can be provided right now, but this is where we're And I'll also acknowledge that these, these guys, they support our Vision Zero projects for construction. They do the signs, they do the flex posts. In some cases, they do the thermoplastic crosswalks for the whole project. And we also have two sign painters for the whole city who painted, no one knows how many signs, I guessed 8,000 signs. And they don't, not only do they do signs, they do everything. They do banners, they do ice rings, they do your informational sign outside this door telling you what this chamber is. They made that sign. And so I'm just excited about their work. Like, they're great. 17 full-time staff? If I have that right? Yeah, 17 full-time staff for the whole city. And then, last but not least, is our Signals Maintenance Group. This is a rough list of everything they did over the year. I would probably call their workload one of the more diverse in the city just because of how the traffic signal technology is changing, and I would also consider them to be essentially first responders, because when poles get knocked down, like, they are on the scene immediately to secure the site and begin cleanup. And this is going into it, these guys, not only do they have to do heavy construction and that they're electricians, but there's a programming element, they're the network communication element, and they also go out, and there's lines on the ground, you see that identify utilities underground, we're the ones painting them. So it's red. They, they handle a lot of work. We have 600 and I think 15-ish traffic signals in the city plus several flashing beacons. It's a lot. I also want to highlight their work. April 29th, 2025, we had three signal poles knocked down. At times, we had anywhere from probably 75 signals that either were flashing or did not have power, and so they were working nonstop for those first four or five days responding to calls, 100-plus response calls. And that group is 13 full-time staff, so I'm really appreciative of all their work, and I hope this presentation, like, shed some light in terms of how, how much they accomplished for the city.
All right. So I am the fiscal supervisor, and so I wanted to provide some numbers of what we have done as a department across the whole year. Through the end of November, we have spent $73 million of capital funds. A lot of this has been reimbursed or is reimbursable and will be reimbursed, but that's just a sort of scale of how much money we have spent. The main drivers of this have been the tip bridge projects highlighted by Charles Anderson. Paving has $19 million, and slope projects driven primarily by the Mount Washington Pima Grant, $8.2 million of money spent. Other project areas that a lot of people ask questions about, we spent about $4 million fixing up our local bridges, $400,000 in Vision Zero traffic calming work, with the note that there's a lot of work that is still un-invoiced or unprocessed yet, but will be coming in maybe in the next month or into the new year. And then $175,000 in bike infrastructure, which represents about a quarter of a percent of all the money that we've expended on the capital side. So Domi is more than just bike lanes. We have received 26, over $26 million of reimbursements from PennDOT for various federal projects and or grants, and we have applied for $67 million in grant, $67 million in funding across 20, about, across 19 grant projects, and we're waiting to hear back still on a big chunk of them. And that's the wrap of 2025. For 2026, this is off on, Domi has a very small operating budget slide where we are the seventh largest operating department, but we have the fourth largest budget overall because we have $47 million of capital projects in the budget. And then 61% of our capital money is directed into the paving program. If you did, if you remove that, that's $11 million of local funding for all other projects in the city that we're managing in the city. And so for each non-paving capital dollar, this Domi brings in $1.80 in match or outside funding. And I will pass it off to Jeff to talk about 2026 stuff.
And we're almost done, I promise. For 2026, we're looking at add a couple new positions. We do need that infrastructure engagement performance manager. This person will be able to go out to the community, go out to the public meetings, engage everybody about our project. As you can see, we're really passionate about them. We want the community and everybody also to know about them and be involved in them. The next one is a press officer. This is for all of our press releases. We're looking to add a person that's going to be able to get to social media and to get to the media, or to get to regular media about when our projects are happening. And the last one is, excuse me, it's a Vision Zero Coordinator. We talked about this position before. We really, this program's been going really well, but we really need a person that's going to be a part of it, it's going to own it, and it's going to drive it the way it should be. And we are looking to add two seasonal labors. This is for Zach and his group. This is to put two labors in the Bridge Division, okay? The 2026 milestones, what to look for is Panther Hollow Bridge will be open this, in 2026. We have three major road reconstructions. We have Penn Avenue in the Garfield area that will be starting construction, Smithfield Street in downtown Pittsburgh, and the Liberty Avenue in the Strip District. We also have Safe Streets for All. This is part of Vision Zero. It's a $1.6 million planning grant that we are working with CMU on, and on, in quarter two of 2026, we'll have the automated red light enforcement deployed. We also have the Traffic Management Center online. We'll be able to do this by, in, in the remote area and be able to manage and take a look at where all the signals are at in the city of Pittsburgh, majority of the lights in city of Pittsburgh, let me rephrase that. And also, a couple of our projects that we, that we are not, we do not own, we're not the managers of it, but we do have a lot of city staff time is BRT. The Uptown and Oakland portion will be finished construction in 2026. The big one, the NFL Draft, this is the biggest event that I know in my lifetime in Pittsburgh. We do have Domi staff that is dedicated to the draft to make sure it goes well. We have a lot of people coming in. We want to make sure they get in safely and get in appropriately, so we're working on that, a lot of hours, okay? Commercial Street Bridge Detour, this is a PennDOT Oversight Project, but we've been working with Malik and his team on the detour throughout the city of Pittsburgh and with Councilwoman's help to get people around without a lot of major headaches. And also, updates to the TIS, this is the Traffic Impact Study. Angie and her group, they have been really, that will be finished in 2026 also. The objectives, we need help to get there. Again, we're going to keep on harping on Vision Zero. We really need to hire that full-time Vision Zero Coordinator. It's been going really well, successful, but we really need that position. Also, you heard it from the whole team, we want to expand in-house capacity. Simple, people, we need people. We're doing things in-house, plan studies through Angie's group, they're doing design work in, in Eric and Mike's work, in Mike's, Mike's group, and also with Zach with the labor positions of actually fixing bridges and not writing work orders. It's great to see. We want to keep it doing and doing it well. Also, we want improved delivery of capital projects, grant projects. I've been with the city now for nine years, and when I first came, we had about five projects on the tip. That was about, that's for federally and state-funded projects. We're about 46 projects in that amount of time, and then we also have other projects that we receive grant funding. We want to go after more. As you can see, we have a hungry team here. We want to be able to go after those grants, but we need money. We would like to get a line item or some creative way to be able to go after more grants. Like we said before, a lot of the grants have a 20% match, some a 5%. So for instance, for a million-dollar project, if it's a 20% match, it's $200,000 of city dollars we're getting for a million-dollar project. We want to go after it, but we need some money to go after these grants. And also align our local agreement budget policies with PennDOT. This is also to be able to get our projects to go faster. Our projects are tied, you guys see us up here a lot in the council chambers to go through legislation. Charles Anderson, I think we had, what, 26 legislations to go through? That took us time. Every time we had to come up to see you guys, we love talking to you guys, but 26 times for a bridge is a lot. That is, that makes it go slower, it makes it go longer, and we want to get these projects moving and get them open for the public. That is all we have today for you guys. Any questions?
Great. Thank you. Yeah, so I'll open it up to members. Councilwoman Gross, I know you have a time commitment, so go first.
Yeah, I wanted to keep it short for all of my colleagues, because I am running out the door. You know we are struggling with budget, and this is one of these conundrums, right? It's like, but I'm also really enthusiastic about hearing about doing work in-house. So most of us have now experienced lots of infrastructure projects, and when it's also contracted, it takes years. Well, you didn't make it into the scope for this year, your steps just fell down, and we've already scoped out the contract for next year, and then you got to wait another year, and then another year, and then the price changes. And so the more of these kinds of things that we can do in-house, we learned the same lesson at PWSA, right? We used to, you know, everything was outsourced, the entire, like, the entire capital budget of PWSA and all the engineering. And then, but there wasn't much work done. And when suddenly, you know, 30 years of work hadn't been done, and you had to do all of the work, we really learned that some of it could be brought in-house, right? And there were in-house crews ready for when something happened with the water plant or something like that. So that's a balance. We're going to have to juggle that, because we really, it is cost savings and it's expeditious, right? You can get that project done in a year instead of three or four and move on to the next project. So it, it adds up, right? So it's not in, in both time and money, and time is money. And then I, I wanted to ask about some of the bridge projects, because we're doing some of that work in-house as well, and I think this is just some work that I need to look at, maybe the capital asset group, right? I think it was both bridges and retaining walls that we kind of inventoried, and again, nobody had done that in generations, let alone decades, right? And so now we have, like, here is the list of our walls. I don't know what it was, 1,000 walls, something like that? And so what condition are they in? Is that in Cartograph? Because we were voting on that earlier today.
Yeah, everything, our entire retaining wall inventory exists within Cartograph.
Great. And that allows us also to compare to the, some of the other utilities, like PWSA's also using Cartograph? True, false? Do you know this? I think that's also true, so maybe something to check on. It was meant to be true three or four years ago when we were all looking for, you know, for years, they were all trying to get Excela to work both so they could actually compare things like, hey, do you already know you've got lots of leaking pipes on this hillside? Because we've got a retaining wall on that hillside, and I'm not sure, I think it was the intention to all, both switch over to Cartograph so that those things could happen, so you don't end up closing down the east busway for three days and imperiling people's neighborhoods. So, so that's a good idea. And then I'm just going to leave, I was keeping it under five minutes. I'm going to leave with a crazy thought. Engineers sometimes tell us things, right? Not, you know, outside the city. And this one was affirmed to me when I visited Chicago a couple years ago with my daughter, and we did one of those river tours, you're on like a little riverboat, the Chicago River, and you're looking at the architecture, and all of the bridges are open steel mesh. Great. That are, I have photos of them that I won't spend time finding, right? And we know that generally, people usually don't like them because they kind of go, like, I'm old enough to remember when, like, a lot of our bridges, I think, like, the Liberty Bridge was like that at one point in my lifetime, right? They weren't asphalt surface, and certainly, they weren't concrete piers. And so I'm told by people who, like, sell steel bridges that they're faster, a lot faster to construct, possibly cheaper in some cases, and last longer. I'm not an engineer, I don't know these things, but I do see that they have them in other cities. And in the Chicago River ones are, it's, I think that river is smaller than like any of our rivers, but, so they are not big bridges, so you're not driving over the steel grate for a long time. But just food for thought, since we do have a lot of bridges, and they are in terrible shape, and they're all concrete and asphalt. And they, you know, it's expensive to maintain, so I'll just leave you with that, just food for thought. Thank you, I appreciate it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm not sure who was it, Councilwoman Strasburger next? Councilwoman Sharland?
Uh...
I don't remember.
So, that, well, thank you all for, for being here. You know, also, I want to appreciate, thank you for recognizing the overarching, you know, situation that we're in here in terms of our budget, and I, you know, I appreciate, most of you have referenced kind of the, understanding the reality that, that we're facing here, which none of us, none of us really want to be in. I want to start off, though, again, with talking about some of the, our financial constraints here. Something that has always been on my radar is our inability to go after grants because we don't have the matching funds. And, and really, that is us leaving money on the table. There's so much more work that all of you can do if we were able to have that, to have approval to go over, you know, after these, these monies that exist and we are just losing out on. And I, I really do think it is like, you know, there's, there's major cost savings that come from that. I know specifically, you know, Mike, I think this was, you, you kind of educated me on this the first and others have as well. But the idea of these green light grow grants that are, you know, a lot of free money for us and we really should never be paying for, paying full cost for signal upgrades when there is that money there. But sometimes we just cannot find the matching funds. You know, so I do want to ask you, you know, how much do we think we really need in order to create that, that line item? That will allow you to go after this additional money?
We'll take a look at that to be, give you a better number. We could take a look and then get back to you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I mean, I think it's, and the concept that we have been told from OMB of we, we want to require the project managers to go after their own grants is crazy. I, none of you have time for that. None of, none of the folks working for you have, have time for that. I, I, we need to make sure like, that is such a cost savings if we can figure out how to, to run that correctly.
Yeah, our grants right now for DOMI, we have Angie Martin. She's one who spearheads it for the department. So the project managers really talk to Angie and Angie talks to them about what the priorities are. She works with the grants team at the mayor's office and that's how.
Yeah. And you know, just to give you like a sense of scale for what we would need in that line item. We very likely would be looking at, you know, millions in the bigger years. So like this year, SPC opened, that's the regional MPO. They process a lot of grants that were eligible for from federal dollars. Those are all 20% matches. But we package, the, the projects that we're applying for are corridors. So we applied, submitted CMAC applications for Warrington Avenue and for Murray Avenue this year. I think Warrington has seven, seven signals, Murray has nine. So those projects are seven to nine million dollars. So to get us the 20% match, you know, we have to, to be able to meet that. But again, it's that value for we put in 20 and we get, you know, the 80% and these are all infrastructure that are past their current life anyway. So like realistically, there are maintenance issues as well. And so us being able to spend our time, you know, putting together really good project proposals, really sound construction estimates and plans. That is a much better use of our time than us having to, you know, pilfer through old accounts, trying to cobble together the local match needed. I would just like to find a way to make it a little bit more of like a fluid thing. These are, these are money, you know, in the case of the SPC grants. That, you know, the feds sent down to this region saying that based on our population, this is how much transportation investment, you know, we should be making. And so I think you're absolutely right. Like if we're not going after these grants, we're leaving money that's for us on the table. And it's just the case that we have to, you know, match it 20%.
Yeah, I, you know, I want to, the, I, I know that there's a lot of projects that you guys all want to work on, but the overarching project that really needs to happen in your department. And it's not with you as much as it is, you know, OMB, but that is, that is the project that I think will have the most impact on all of your work. Finding a way, a way to do that. So I do hope that we're able to work with the next administration and really figure out a better way to bring those dollars in and not leave money on the table. You know, because we end up in a situation like this here. So that being said, some more specific projects, I wanted to talk about the LED light conversion. So we're talking there, we're talking streetlights, not signals, correct?
Correct.
How far along are we in there? How are we choosing neighborhoods? What, what's, tell me about that project. I have not been updated on that in a while.
We're 40% done.
Really?
And so I don't know how many crews we have working a day, but it's just basically like a little chain. They go down. They just chew their way through the city. It's picked by council district and there's also an equity component into this in terms of selecting which neighborhoods we go to. It's by and large, it's, it's going smoothly, right? We started this in April, so we are eight months into it. I'm almost halfway done. We have had some concerns about the, the light that is emitted, but by and large compared to our partner cities that did this, you know, four or five years ago. We're lucky to have done it now instead of then because of light technology and how we view street lighting in the city has changed.
So we believe that it'll be completed by the end of next year. Is it about, about right?
I don't want, that sounds right to me. Like Jeff, my, my boss is saying yes. I don't want, I don't speak out of turn.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, that's something, I mean, since I started here as a staffer, that is something that we've been clamoring for and specifically Beltsover Knoxville. If you could give me an update on where they are in terms of being upgraded there. We, we know that we, it came up specifically during Halloween. We were talking about all the kids running around and not having, you know, the, the neighborhood just being broadly too dim. What we can do to improve that. So, you know, please let me know where we are on that.
Yes.
You know, so, well, I guess the other traffic thing, I'm, I'm sure others will ask you a lot about, a lot of the other traffic calming issues here. And I, I often, I feel like I've spent enough time with you that, that I, I feel like I'm preaching some of your, your gospel when I talk to
That's not good.
The, the, you know, the, the argument that I always make is that no one would pretend to be, you know, a, a, a bridge engineer, but everyone pretends to be a traffic engineer. And I often, well.
Why do you think I'm so angry all the time?
But I, I often am I, you know, like when I'm driving, I'm like, man, these lights, they should be time different. Like, you know, and there's probably a lot more that is in that calculation than I'm aware of. But how, how often are you looking at the, you know, the timing of lights and, you know, like an example I'm thinking of is like the left, left turn signal on the 10th Street Bridge coming into town. That's, that's green for a second and only a second. And it is on my commute and I'm mad at you every morning.
You know, you know my number.
Yeah. But how often are you looking at that?
So state of good practice is every two years. You do it, but that's state of good practice. As, as I will harp on, there are six people on my team who focus on traffic signals. And they're also the ones who are managing the, like the $60 million of projects. And so if I'm being painfully blunt, it's when we get time, project delivery is always going to be the thing like that's, that's where we make the most difference in my opinion. And it's going to be driven by three one-ones and then simply time. If someone has time, you could also only, right now I mentioned we're doing things dumb. We can only, I have to be boots on the ground, standing in a corner with a clipboard, looking at things to make that adjustment for that protected left turn from Armstrong Bridge onto Second Avenue, 10th Street Bridge. And so the answer is we don't have it programmed. I would like to. And if we, like the things such as the Traffic Management Center as well as getting fiber. You know, I've struggled so much to get fiber pulled into 412. So once we get that fiber pulled in there and we can actually talk to the signals, then it's going to be like on a day-to-day basis, like as we're, as we're working, we see problems. If we get eyes on these traffic signals, we can be doing it as much or as little as we want.
So I do want to put a request in for the, the 10th Street that
I wrote it down.
That's my issue.
I got you.
But I do want to talk about the, the rest of Carson Street. I think that, that does need to be re-timed. Especially with the, the safety improvements that have been made on Sarah Street. I think that is something that we need to, to, to look through. If, if, you know, I'd be happy to.
If you want to like, any of we talk off offline, I'd be happy to look into that.
Yeah. So the other thing I want to mention, you know, it, it will be a big fight for me this year. That we're able to get, I believe it's 200,000 that we need for the Baldoff Street. You know, kind of affiliated with the Porto or the Billy Buck Hill landslide. You know, I think that's, we're going to have to find that somewhere. I'm not sure where, but you know, I've talked to you guys about that before. I, I do wonder though, a project like that where we need 200,000 in the grand scheme of things, not that much money to move forward in design. Why, why is it that you think that OMB did not score? We're literally saving people's houses. Why did that project not score well? I mean, like people
I have no idea.
People will be homeless if that project does not.
Yeah. I mean, we were of course discouraged also when we didn't, I don't know. I think that's a question for OMB.
So if you look in the back of the capital budget book, it tells you of the five scores, who scored it. So you can ask the representatives from council how they scored.
Yeah. Well, maybe we'll talk later, Pete. No, I, I mean, I, I am, like, that is, what other projects that we're, you know, we're talking today about how important the Housing Opportunity Fund is and keeping people in their homes. People are going to lose their homes if we don't move forward on this project. You know, I, I just don't understand how, kind of how those things don't, don't get scored well and what else in through the city is, is struggling like that. And I do hope that it's something that we're able to, to change our process around.
Be great. Yeah.
Okay, cool. The last, last thing I just wanted, wanted to mention, some kind of positives that your department has worked through this year. I really appreciate all the, the work that has gone into the 18th Street. Vulnerable Road User Network. Safety improvements that, that has been, you know, fantastic to see. Also 21st Street, I, I think all of us will be happy when we don't have to wonder, wonder what's going to happen with the end of that DCE grant there. Thank you so much for your community process on that. And again, want to, want to thank, you know, his Angie and really Ryland who were able to make some of our, our traffic or our parking issues in South Side. Move forwards that we're able to, to build a project that we've been litigating for, for years now. And, you know, it was really a lot of your hours and hard work to be able to make that happen. And the one other employee that is not in your, necessarily in your department, but works so closely with you is, is Yon, who has been so valuable for me, you know, to have someone with some of the expertise that can go out into the district, meet with residents, often translate from engineer to, you know, neighbor. And be able to mitigate that, that solution, even if it isn't necessarily the result that, that the neighbor wants to see. But being able to have someone from DOMI and from the city come out there with a level of expertise is, is just so important. And, you know, I really, really appreciate that relationship and how that's been working over the last two years or so.
Yon might be like the most important person to me, right? I mean, not, not to like insult my teammates or anyone at the table right here, but I talk with Yon on a daily basis. And he is a unicorn in terms of, I'm true, in terms of his ability to like have the emotional intelligence to talk to different audiences as well as the technical aptitude to like learn things, pick them up and convey them. I can't speak for my colleagues, but my operations suffer if he's not a part of them.
Yeah.
He's, he's so good.
Yeah. And, and knowing, you know, again, trying to get you to come out to a, a site visit and you're, you're spread so thin as it is. Being able to send, be able to send Yon so you can continue doing the work that you're supposed to be doing. And, you know, Yon can be yelled at for a little bit.
No, no, no. He's a district two resident.
So just
No kidding aside, like my team has the most public scrutiny, I think, in terms of our projects. And I would burn out and leave this position if I had to go in front of the community, the amount of times that are asked of me. So having someone like Yon who's removed from that is a major reason why I'm still here.
It's good to hear. All right. Well, you know, we will all be talking a lot more, I'm, I'm sure, but just want to, want to thank you guys for, for coming out today and pray for us as we try to figure this budget out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman Strasberger.
Thank you. I'll, I'll reiterate what my colleagues have said about, and I've worked with each and every one of you on various projects or programs or task forces and cannot speak highly enough about the work that you and your teams do on a daily basis. It's just, I think that one Evan, that one bar chart that shows that the capital relative to operating is the most striking of all of this. I mean, what you are able to accomplish relative to other departments and the budget that you work with based, relative to the, the operating that you're given is really something and it has been for a while. This is not news. Okay, a couple of questions. One is if we were to reimagine what, I, I, you know, I, I see that as, as we have, as DOMI has been sort of, you know, it's not, and I would not say it's in its infancy anymore, but it has, it's been, you know, continuing to grow and learn in which ways it's growing and build the plane while it's while it's flying it, right? Continuing to figure that all out, right? Like you, 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 you learn and then you iterate and then you learn some more. And I mean, right now we know that when it comes to traffic calming, we have, there's not, there's a reason there are 2,500 individual requests out there, right? It's because people see that that is the tool that the city has and then they request it. And then they see their neighbors getting speed humps and they're like, I want that and everyone wants it. But if there was a world in which, I just want to ask the question, like anyone who wants to answer in terms of your philosophy or theory, if there were the possibility of, of partnering engineering, like speed humps or chicanes or whatever it might be, shortened crosswalks with increased enforcement that we knew we were going to get. How would that change your approach to some of these? And is that, would that be a welcomed like additive or would that help supplant some of these requests? Because we knew, hey, like this isn't a great candidate for speed humps because we have so many others we have to get to, but we know that we could work with public safety or automation to ensure that at this one Speedway or intersection, we knew that it was, so I know Arlie's coming online and that's one thing, but that's not going to be everything, right? So how are you thinking about that?
Yeah, I'll get it started and then anyone else who wants to chime in, please. So I think what you're honing in on is really the future of the work, especially the Vision Zero program. So a recognition that we are not going to build our way to, you know, safe drivers or zero fatalities. Or, you know, more comfortable, you know, streetscapes for our residential neighborhoods. You know, all of these things rely on a combination of roadway design elements, good user behavior. Enforcement is one of those things that can change behavior. So it's a critical part of the work. As well as like making sure that we have the policies and standards in place to be able to, you know, regulate at various levels of government. So it's no secret to DOMI that, you know, we're not going to build our way to, you know, Vision Zero or to meet every single one of these needs. And that we really need to be working to solve things more comprehensively. So, you know, the things that I am looking forward to sort of on the horizon of this work is DOMI doing more of the, you know, program sort of element. Whether that's through Visions era working groups. We had our very first Vision Era Conference this year, which sold out. It was excellent. And our Complete Streets Advisory Group. So how can we sort of engage with residents at a policy level? As opposed to having to pretend that every, the end-all be-all is a project because it's absolutely not. It's about how we, you know, respect each other as neighbors. It's about how, you know, if we're choosing to drive or run a red light, park too close to an intersection, block an ADA ramp. So the, advancing the Complete Streets Advisory Group will be one way that we can, you know, build that out. As a part of that 1.6 million dollar Safe Streets for All Grant, there's some additional work in there. A street design guidebook, which will help us sort of standardize a lot of these treatments across the board. As well as some funding for a community ambassadors program. And that's where we'll actually be able to, you know, offer small funds, grants, educational materials for neighbors to talk to their neighbors about safe streets. So, you know, we don't need to feel that the only way to have, you know, people driving responsibly on your street is to install a asphalt hump. You know, there's other tools in the toolbox and, you know, if we approach these problems comprehensively, you know, that's going to be how we actually, you know, solve, solve it at the global level and not just, you know, what's happening on the street outside of my front door.
I'll, I'll just go to suggest that I'm always going to want to build things hair on fire. Like I don't see there's a world in which I want that world to exist, but I don't think that's coming anytime soon. And so I don't see what you suggest changing my approach, but I think, you know, we asked for very, we have very few positions we asked for, one of which is a Vision Zero Coordinator. And so having someone in like, I know I've, I've heard Mayor Lach O'Connor speak about Vision Zero. So I have zero concerns about him not moving this forward. But anytime there's a change of like, you all's role in terms of making sure Vision Zero is prioritized and we have this person who can be dedicated to it full-time. And like thinking of ideas or working with you collectively is so crucial to moving this forward.
Yeah, no, having engaged with Vision Zero in various capacities, I see the, the benefit. And then what I always tell people is it's the multi-departmental approach that really is what makes it special and what makes it effective as well. And I know that will grow and iterate as, as well in the years to come. So, and I did, I mentioned enforcement, but of course, yes. So, and I did, I mentioned enforcement, but of course, yes, thank you for reminding us and reminding me that there are multiple elements of what makes safe streets. My, my, my motivation there is both the acknowledgement that there aren't, you know, is public safety and there aren't unlimited funds. So if there could be a way to in the future, reappropriate some of the many, many funds we're spending on the engineering piece to like the ones that are the most necessary, that would be, um, and while also then satisfying the public safety needs that are being asked for, you know, that's what I'm trying to get out there. Okay. I was, um, honored, I guess is the word, to take place in the Charles Anderson Sprint, so-called, um, uh, Charles Anderson Sprint, task force to look at what was mentioned at the end of this presentation about how we can, thank you, Eric, for, for your, for your leadership there on how we can, how was it phrased here, improve the, uh, align local agreement and budget policies with PennDOT and S P C policies, bring down the, the, the number of times that something like a bridge project is coming back to council. That was eye-opening, just how, the like long and circuitous, like, just like route that any kind of budget or project that has to do with PennDOT takes, like shoots and ladders. And, um, I just want to ask, like, who is owning that so that we can continue moving that forward despite an administration change? Because I don't want to lose that work. I think it's really crucial that we figure out some solution to make these projects go faster. On, on the, on the, on the, on the, like bureaucratic end, not necessarily the design end, maybe the design end too.
So I will say, I mean, I was really excited that we did some of that work with Charles Anderson and, and some of the follow-up we had and, you know, I saw some hope and I think it kind of lost steam, um, over this past year. It's something I would like to focus on in the new year and really put some effort into it, some time into it. You know, particularly now with, with Zach being my deputy and taking a closer oversight of the structure stuff, I would like to, to spend some time on like the process improvement aspect. And, you know, if you're still excited about that, I would be happy to, to work together and see what we can do in the new administration. I don't, I think it's hard. I think, I mean, I think even just like, even just explaining all the steps to lead to the time is like, it's, it's hard to even like, just explain where we're at and, and why it takes so long. But I think there's a lot of things that could be done. I think a lot of them are very complicated and are going to require everyone from different departments, from the mayor's office, from council to buy in if we want to try to pursue some of those, some changes. But I think it could pay, like, as we've acknowledged, we, we want more staff. We are not in a situation where we can expect to have any significant staff growth this year because of the budget is so tight. But on the flip side, if we reduce the workload, that has the same effect of allowing us to, um, just move things through in a faster. And, and the overall goal, of course, is to deliver projects that help our citizens. So it's, it's not about, to us, I think, we want to get the project delivered and we want to, you know, I think we do enough of that work, enough of that eighty to a hundred percent federally funded work that, it could be worth looking specifically in that area. Are there processes that maybe only apply to those things, but, you know, it's worth potentially having separate processes that would, would align with the way the feds give us money and allow those things to move faster. So, um, yeah, I'm hoping that, that there'll be some appetite to, to look at that again in the new year.
So to put a scale on that, we've advanced around eighty pieces of legislation this year. I would say sixty of those are somehow tied to either a tip project, either an R A issuance, adjustment, supplement, or the contracting piece. So we've been to the council sixty times for projects that are budget approved and just we have to come here to either add additional federal money that we've got because a new phase is coming online or a phase went over budget and we went to S P C, got the extra three hundred thousand dollars. So we had to come back here, go through the six-week process of legislation and then go through the four-month contracting process. So there is definitely, though, Eric is right, if we could find a way to streamline that process, we could save a ton of time on that end.
And I could add one more thing to that. The, the, the task force you mentioned was stood up when we were trying to get the Charles Anderson Construction Agreement executed within the notice to proceed window that we have for these PennDOT oversight projects. You know, I felt that it was critical that we did it, that we meet that goal, but I didn't know if we could. And folks were, were kind enough, you know, we had weekly meetings, um, you were on, I was on, and we had various directors and, and, you know, chiefs and lots of, lots of folks from every department in these meetings weekly and we made it happen. Which is great, but obviously you can't do those meetings for all projects. You shouldn't have to. We're currently working towards notice to proceed on our Penn Avenue Phase Two project. We're waiting for some agreements. Notice proceed is supposed to be given on January fifth. We are very close to the end of the year shutdown and I'm not, you know, I was just trying to get some information today if we're going to meet that date and I'm not sure if we're going to. But I want to find a way that we don't have to have everybody on weekly calls to make it happen, just make a process that works.
Absolutely. We have to wait, make a way for government to work for people without all the bureaucracy there, right? Like, we just want the bridges to be fixed and in place and built and, and that's that, right?
So to answer your question, Eric is going to be.
So glad to hear it. And then I was debating whether to ask this question. There's, there's news coming out that is, I think, surprised to some of us on council that Waymo Driver's Realist Taxis might be coming to Pittsburgh and wondering if there was anything that has, that, that you're aware of that has, um, where, where they have interacted with the city government at all.
I'll go ahead and take that because, uh, new mobility services and sort of these, uh, new, uh, mobility or technology deployments happen to fall under the planning group. So we were not, there's been, you know, a public or a news article that came out about Waymo, which operates, um, autonomous vehicles in several cities throughout the country, uh, coming to Pittsburgh. In the state of Pennsylvania, uh, we've been preempted at the state level in order to, uh, put very much potentially any regulation on those operators. Um, however, uh, we maintain a really good relationship with the PennDOT Central Office that does issue the state level permits. And so, um, we're in the process of lining up conversations with them to see what we might be able to do, um, at the local level, even though it looks like we've been preempted at the state. So, this is a company that operates, again, um, in other cities. Um, I believe that they are operating in Philadelphia. I can't say I'm surprised to see them potentially coming to Pittsburgh because of that preemption thing. But we have had, I think, success in, um, you know, working with these new technology deployments. And prior years, I, this was all kind of pre-COVID, um, we were working with several autonomous vehicle testers operating in the city. So it's not an, an foreign concept to us. We've seen them deployed in other cities, which means we have good examples of things that work, things to kind of be prepared for. But certainly, you know, we'll, we're going to try to get as much ahead of it as we possibly can. Because there will be questions that the public will have, um, as these, you know, autonomous, uh, vehicles are, are deployed on city streets.
I appreciate your answer. It's a very diplomatic way of putting it and, um, I hope that they, I hope that you are able to work with them and that they come to us to work with us as well. So, those, those are the extent, that's extended my questions. Thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for all of the work that you do across the city of Pittsburgh. But this is actually one of the departments that actually does a lot of work in District Two, whether you want to or not because of landslides and, you know, other things that happen there. But, and I want to thank you for always responding and always trying to come up with something, um, to prevent the fourteen million dollars worth of work, um, to stabilize Grandview in that area. So that helped up both of us. Um, so I want to thank you for all that work and and how, do you check on it, see how that's holding up?
Yeah, we get out there. Yep.
And you think it's okay still?
It's doing great, yeah. We did have some small repairs made to Greenleaf sites. Those are good now and, um, yeah, we'll keep monitoring it. It'll go into our, you know, our retaining wall inspection program.
I got a little nervous because I went by one damn thing and that doesn't look good.
Yeah, they're back out there again, yeah.
Heart starts racing as if it's me causing the landslide. So, um, okay, so I'm, thank, thank you for, uh, your work there. But so McGardle and then Elliot, you're doing a lot of work in Elliot. A lot of, so many landslides or slope remediation issues. I think we have the number one in the city in District Two, the number, you know, the most in District Two. So, um, and how are you with funding for those for the coming year? Same thing?
Yeah, so, um, Herndon Street, of course, is one of the ones that you're referencing. We do have the funding for that. It should be going out to bid for construction, um, within the next couple of weeks. Um, and we'll start work next year, so that's funded. I, I don't believe that there is specific funding for some of the other streets up there. Right now, we've been, you know, been asking for a number of years now. Um, Herndon then did get funded and, and has progressed, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Emerald View.
Emerald View, not on in Elliot, but over, um,
In the Mount, yeah.
Yeah, in the Mount, that one, that one has funding, so that one's progressing.
Good, okay. And then you're doing a lot of work on McGardle.
Yep.
And so I just want people to know that there's a lot of work. I, I'm not going to go through all the lists, but I do know that there's significant work from your department in District, occurring in District Two. One of the things I do want to talk about is the bike infrastructure and the traffic calming. And I, I love the idea of calming traffic. I like the idea of maybe making people take their driver's less test, you know, license test over again. I don't know. Because I think there's such a problem right now, I really do. I mean, all, everywhere I go, no matter what city, no matter what state, it's, it's an issue. And so, um, I would like to see something more there. But I do worry that when we're putting in all this infrastructure to slow things down, that we're also slowing down our first responders. And I also am concerned that when you're putting in infrastructure, we have an aging population in the city of Pittsburgh and it's not as easy to navigate those things, you know, when you're, when you're an elderly person. Trust me, I'm elderly. So I get it. So I want to know, um, do you take any of that into consideration? You know, the ability, you know, ability of other people? Or is it just we want to put bike infrastructure in and that's it?
That's a, that's a nuanced answer. What I will say is certainly not we just want to put in bike infrastructure, that's it. Like, nothing, traffic, I actually think is, traffic engineering is the only like human-centered branch of civil engineering, I think. And so everything we do from traffic signals, whatever, has to have some form of human design around it. So from, from the, um, the aging population in terms of driving, I, that is not, I know of, I don't know of any literature that could guide me about having, having like in, intersection devices or at things be age-friendly. People do complain about their ability to navigate them, which even though it's, that's like a frustrating thing, that can be embarrassing at times. Like if someone's having trouble navigating, navigating the stuff, it means they're probably moving very slowly, which in my mind is a, a good thing. Like, because if you're moving slowly, then your likelihood of you severely injuring or killing someone is severely reduced. When it comes to bike lanes.
If you're driving, I think, right? Not if you're walking.
If you're, if you're driving a car. Yeah, so, so, and so people see confusion.
I'm concerned about the people, the pedestrians.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Senior citizens, no. Mostly that's my concern.
Sure.
Is that they're seniors and people, we've heard from people from the, you know, varying ability communities. And, um, they have trouble navigating their, you know, equipment and stuff. And I had talked about this before, maybe talking to and working with and putting, when you have a task force working with, um, Pioneer School and School for the Blind and different people to get a group of people, so you're getting diverse opinions. That's all. And maybe some of the senior centers or something.
Angie's work with Complete Streets, I'm happy to talk about the first responders more, but Angie's best.
From all together, for all this work, collective work, you need to have some collective responses and, and some feedback from different opinions. I mean, when, honestly, when I see the Penn Avenue, the, the bike lanes, I'd be livid if I put money into a business and you just plop down bike lanes down Penn Avenue without, you know, having a real feedback with them and trying to figure out how you could work with them. I went down there the other day. I couldn't believe it, to be honest with you. But, um, for me, that's my, those are my concerns, other than, um, making sure that we're doing the, continuing the projects. I'm happy that you're putting in the lights. Um, the speed bumps, I want to know why we're not doing more of the in-house, if we're even trying to train anyone to do it in-house?
So DOMI doesn't have, um, the street division. Um, it goes through D B W and we were working with D B W on, we actually had them shadow, um, our team, not our team, the contractor that makes speed humps. So right now that'd be a D P W function, but we were working on it with them so that we could do it in-house. We're looking to do that in twenty twenty-six. It'll be easier, cheaper, faster. We're just going to keep on continuous conversations with D B W.
I just think it would probably, you know, eliminate that list, that waiting list a little bit if you could do it in-house when you need it.
If we had the people and the material, DOMI would do it, but right now it sits with D P W.
Well, I'm sure the new administration coming is going to make some changes from, from that, from what I understand, from what I understand. I could, I could be, I could have misunderstood. But I think in terms of making sure that everybody can operate the way they need to. And everybody does that. Every administration comes in and makes some, some kind of changes. The other thing I want to know about the, the timing of the lights of the West End Circle, who does that? So what I hear all the time constantly is that the West End is held up while they're coming through the, the strip to go over the bridge from the South Hills. So it's a, our, our people are held up at the West End Circle and traffic's backed up all the way up, you know, Nobles Town Road while meanwhile the cars are flying through. You know? So they're always asking about the timing of those lights. And we've, we've addressed them a couple of times, but it's still just not, not perfect. Our people in the West End are constantly waiting.
I will add this to my list.
Yeah, it's in the West End, so I just want to make sure, you know, because I mean, Yon actually lives right by there. So does David Fromm.
For the record, Yon has never complained to me.
Can I just say, no, he doesn't complain about anything because they're amazing. They are amazing. All three of those guys, Dave, David Fromm and Yon and Ronnie Fromm, they're, they're just amazing District Two DOMI residents. But I just want to, I'll end it with, um, Evan, you know, if you could just tell me, you know, my husband and your father-in-law, Bob Charlin's dad have worked together for over forty years. And the same, I get invited to the family reunions every year. So when I'm there, the one thing I keep hearing his mother say is, I don't know why I don't have any grandkids.
I plead the fifth.
So I thought I'd take this opportunity to ask you on behalf of Bob's mom, she wants to be a grandma. And you're fiscally responsible, so you should know you could probably get, you could probably get a tax, you know, write-off or something.
For the record, that question's from her dad, not her mom.
Yeah, from the dad. Okay, Bob put me up to it. But thank you all for your work and thank you, Councilwoman, for having the meeting.
I think the media has its clip right now.
I'll give it to her on Mother's Day.
Are there any other follow-up questions for members?
You want to ask him if he's going to have kids?
I've got some kids. You can borrow some of mine. Yeah, so I, I, you know, I just want to say thank you all so much. I, the, the sheer volume of work that this department does is just truly mind-boggling, right? With a hundred and twenty people. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, we, we've been sitting here, just, just to get through the presentation alone is, um, it's incredible, right? Like the accomplishments from, from every section and you are all so organized and, um, so responsive. And I know it can be, it can be tough because, um, so much of the work that DOMI does is, it's not stuff that can be done right away, right? Like someone calls and they're like, I, you know, I need some traffic calming on my street or whatever. That's what we get the most calls. And you can't do that. It's, that's not filling a pothole, right? That's not, um, although signs, the sign shop is incredibly fast. If a sign's down, the sign gets up, back up immediately. I mean, and so the things that, uh, that can be done quickly, right? Whether as a, a broken light or whatever, right? Um, are always done quickly and, um, and, uh, you know, the work is, is very impressive, all the longer-term work. I think it's great that, um, that we're beginning to work with the utilities to put traffic calming in. Uh, that's, that's nice to hear. I know that utility coordination, I'm actually probably going to call a post agenda at some point in the new year about utility coordination because I've been hearing a lot, right? Just to get the utilities here and get, um, Brian Ralston here and.
Can I just say Brian Ralston's another great DOMI employee?
Oh, he's incredible, right?
Lives in District Two, so I'll be furiously defensive.
But just because that's something that comes up a lot with residents, um, you know, lots of people have opinions about how we need to be doing that better. And so it's worth a conversation at least. But, um, but I'm glad that that, that that's happening with, with traffic calming. And, um, you know, we do have this large paving budget, which was nineteen point five million this past year, right? And I, it would, it would be, um, interesting to see. 19.5 million this past year, right? And I, it would, it would be interesting to see, so many people want speed humps, right? That if that paving could include a speed hump, if it meant that we did a few less miles, but on the miles that we did do, we were able to, to drop a speed hump in, you know, that might be worthwhile. That might be something to, to think about. I know that, that folks, I mean, you know, over 2,500 individual requests is a lot. And, you know, John Klinger's team is fantastic, does a great job. You know, one thing I do, just with, with regard to the traffic calming and the bike lane infrastructure, I know that the, sort of the, in the, in the Facebook comments, and I hear it a lot, you know, just out about, is this, this sort of statement of, well, they have all this money for traffic calming, you know, they have all this money, like, the city has all this money for traffic calming, has all this money for this and that, but why can't we do? And I, so I just want to underscore, I believe, you know, looking at this report between traffic calming and bike infrastructure is 575,000? Is that?
So that is how much we have spent year-to-date. There's, there's work orders out there on traffic calming that still haven't been paid. So that number would change if we run it at the end of the year.
So, so tops, right? Tops in 2025, what?
One and a half tops.
One and a half million. And we spent 19.5 million on paving, right?
I, I will say that a portion, part of our coordination of developing the paving list involves us looking at the traffic calming and Vision Zero projects that Mike's team is planning on, on installing.
Yeah.
So what we've done for the past couple of years now is actually build the paving into, or build traffic calming into the paving program. So this year, about $800,000 of the paving budget did go to help support the installation of the Vision Zero projects.
Right, but I, I hear you. And even so, right? Like, when we're looking at numbers of stuff, you know, money that we spend, the amount of, the improvement in the quality of life that we get out of these traffic calming projects, right? Of just simply slowing the cars down, of allowing cyclists a safe place to ride next to the cars, not in front of the cars, right, is minuscule compared to what we spend just on smoothing out the road so that it's not like a bumpy ride when you're driving your car. So I just, that's maybe just for other council members, just to like have that in your, in your back pocket when people say, well, we have all this money to spend on traffic calming. We don't spend that much money on it, right? And the amount that we have, that we get, right, the amount that your team is able to do with such a small amount is, is impressive, or I think so, anyway. And I would love to see more. The, I, I didn't realize how many of the streetlights, 40%, that's, that's impressive. I didn't realize how many, how much of that had been, had been installed. I know, I have some, I have a, I have a note to myself to send an email to, to Denny about. It's funny, because now, now I have a few people that are like, it's too bright. So, which, I don't know, maybe it is, but, but that's, that's, you know, if it's going in the window, so. But, you know, I, that's just, that's, that's just an incredible, it's just like one more thing, like one more small thing that was like a huge accomplishment. And I, and even as the chair, right? Like, I didn't even really realize.
It's, it's a Vision Zero project.
Yeah.
Like, street lighting saves lives.
Yeah.
And, and it's just flying under the radar. It's not, but like, it's, and it's one person who's managing it, and...
Yeah, yeah.
He, yeah, his New York Times article about it, that Denny refused to have his picture in because he's shy, which is why I'm talking about him more here.
Yeah.
But, yeah, and he'll, he'll take care of it. Like, he'll, he'll do it remotely.
Anytime I have a, it's done immediately, right? At any rate, and it was funny, in that storm, the, you know, the April storm, when all the, the electricity was out, and I went out walking around my neighborhood, and it was weird to have it be so dark. And it was dangerous, right? Like, it felt very dangerous, because people were driving, people were out driving, and like, all these people were out walking around, even with little handheld lights. So, you know. The one thing sort of future-looking that, oh, well, I can ask you that. I'm just going to ask about the green light go grant for Mifflin. But I can ask you about that another time. Well...
Any day now.
Okay, great. Fingers crossed, fingers crossed, link in place.
I, I checked it, the webpage twice a day.
Okay, great, great. But what I wanted to, to ask about sort of future-looking, so, you know, we see we're, we're spending on all these projects, but, but I wanted to ask about sidewalks. Just in general, I, I feel like we are so hamstrung in Pittsburgh with this, this, where people are responsible for their own sidewalk. And, and what is the, what does the budget look like? I mean, and, and even, and I, and I so appreciate the Critical Sidewalk Gaps program, like, it's great, but I mean, I, I think it said 2.3 miles of sidewalk. And there's just so many places around Pittsburgh where the sidewalks are, are not, in some places, they're really not passable, and other places, it's just not, you know, it's just not a comfortable walk, whether it's trees or whatever. Are there any thoughts about ways that we could improve or sort of out of the box? Again, I'm not saying that, that, but...
Yeah. So ultimately, you know, building sidewalks is a construction project. I believe that last year, we had $700,000 in Critical Sidewalk Gap funding. In the 2026 draft, $350,000. I don't know why I remember that. Those numbers just really stuck with me, because it means we're going to be doing about half as many sidewalk projects than we did this year.
Yeah.
So, you know, ultimately, we have to have the money lined up for construction. Some of the things on, like, the planning and programming side, one of the things in the presentation that I just didn't hit on for the sake of time, Domi worked with our GIS department this year to create a interactive mapping tool that will allow trained users to be able to log sidewalk condition information. So we went through an entire process of creating a manual with photos that says, this is what a crack looks like, this is what scaling looks like, like, and so that, you know, there's a way to like numerically rate the condition of the sidewalk with this manual, get it in a GIS format, report it back to the city. That's going to help us close the gap on sort of the data piece and like an understanding of the magnitude of the issue. The other benefit of it, I think, is that we're doing that by leveraging the interest of advocacy groups. So to make this effort happen, it was an organization called Pittsburgh Walks that came to Domi and said, sidewalks are our priority. How can we work together to help it, make it easier for Domi to build more sidewalks? And so one of the things we can do, we know we struggle with, is the data piece. So this is hopefully going to help us build out, you know, at least an inventory of where the need is. You know, I think always looking for creative, you know, funding solutions, whether they're, you know, grant programs where the city can help, you know, defer the cost of repair, whether it's, you know, working with utilities and developers to make sure that sidewalks are a priority when we're talking about, you know, investment or work done by others. So it's definitely, you know, a critical piece of our infrastructure. We don't know the magnitude of the need right now because of that data piece. And yeah, at the end of the day, like I said, it's a, it's a construction, it's a construction need. I don't know, Eric, if there's anything to add?
No, not too much. I mean, I think, you know, as sidewalks are, are part of the mobility network, in a perfect world, we would be able to manage them the same way we do the asphalt in the street. But, you know, that, that's a potentially huge amount of investment, and we're in a tight budget.
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, I, obviously not, not this year, but, but I thought, I believe it was in Denver, where, you know, introducing the idea of sort of like a sidewalk tax, and in exchange, you're not responsible for your side, you know what I mean? Like, in exchange for that, then, and then, and then we just address sidewalks with whatever budget we have, just like we do with paving, right? Like, we get to your, I mean, if it's urgent, urgent, then, okay, it can get, it gets prioritized, but we could address sidewalks in the same way, right? And if we could generate the funds to do that, and then take the burden off of the property owner to, to, to have to fix the sidewalk. I know that there's like, maybe liability implications and whatnot in that, but I think that it's something worth thinking about. Also, just since we're, so I was in, I was in London over the summer for a couple of days, and I, they have in a few spots, these, these weird, like, it's sidewalks, they look like, like playground surfacing. Is that something? I don't know if they're permeable. It was just interesting. I just wonder in terms of cost, if there's something that's like, less expensive than your typical, than, you know, typical concrete sidewalk?
I haven't seen that one. I'm not sure. I would, you know, wonder about the durability.
I don't know. It was just sort of like a rubbery, it was like a rubbery sidewalk.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, one of the lower-cost things, there are some areas in the city with asphalt sidewalks, which is not standard, and we don't encourage it, and they don't last long, as long, but there are some out there.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I don't have an exact answer, but I think we're, you know, always want to be open to whatever folks are figuring out in the world and see if it applies to us.
Yeah. And I'd also, I mean, in, in areas too, some, in, like, the 31st Ward, for example, I know we've talked about even just using lines, right? Because there's no sidewalks, right? Like, areas where there are no sidewalks at all, just using painted lines to sort of at least create like a space where you can walk and the cars kind of know, and that might serve to narrow the road too and slow cars down. Be something interesting, just a low cost. You know, maybe that's a Vision Zero conversation for next year. But, yeah, I don't really have anything else. I just, it's always such a pleasure working with everyone from Domi, and you do so much. And you're also at everything. You're at everything that everyone else does too, it seems like, you know? When I go to events and things, like, there's, there's always seems to be engagement from Domi in some form or another, which is nice, right? That's the, that's very nice. And all the in-house work that you do, I mean, it's incredible, right? Like, all the planning and engineering and designing, and it's all done, you know, with, with, with a very small team, so very productive. Productivity high with Domi, so it's much appreciated. Anyway, I don't have anything else. If there's any last thoughts before we break?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so with, I guess we've exhausted the, the business of this hearing, and with that, we can adjourn.
Recession.
Recession, recess.
Recession.
With that, we can recess. Do I need a motion? No.
Motion to recess.
Motion to recess. All right.